Okay, we'll call the meeting order for December twenty-second, two thousand five, two thousand twenty-five. Tower of the Wave sounds like more being special meeting. Um, first item is to, uh, pledge allegiance. You want to flag?
Special orders.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Roddy and Barbie, you, uh, we're gonna set the agenda first. Anybody have a add or change on your agenda? Got a motion accepted as written?
Make a motion.
There will, there will be an executive session.
Second.
Motion made seconded any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Now, Roddy, Barbara, you reviewed all public comments. How that works?
They know how that works.
Any slight more announcements?
None for me.
Any public announcements? Commissioner, trustees, emergency services reports, other board announcements?
Uh, WYSI, lights are all done. We're doing the opening night, Friday night, six fifteen.
Thought you were talking about that. I was cornered at a birthday party the other night by Pete D and his wife.
Yep.
They said it was cars parked all the way out to Route fourteen. There was some special thing going on over there.
Saturday, we had a three four G M beret. Wasn't quite to fourteen. It didn't get that far, but it was all the way out to just past Adams.
Anyway, they were asking me if out there where you speed dog park?
Yep.
If somebody that could create a parking, over the whole parking out there or something?
That would be amazing.
What's that?
That would be amazing.
So, I told him I'd talk to you about it.
Yeah.
So, well, everybody's here. We could talk about it, but, um, could look into it with Dave and Jackie and that.
Yep.
I can go with you or whatever. See if it works out something. Their thoughts were would make it easier for people to get out of it. If we could go up through the dump to get out of it.
Yep.
And then have somebody in charge of closing gate and stuff. Make sure if it's closed up afterward.
Yep, cuz it's usually just the bigger events or when we have like three or four games on a Saturday that the parking's an issue. It wasn't too bad this year cuz we had parking attendants, so nobody was blocking the road. Um, but it, that would, that would be super helpful if we could get a lot there.
Uh, we were talking one time about the fence there to keep people going up onto the rocks.
Yep.
Would there be room enough for people to drive through to fill that parking lot from the recreation entrance or?
I mean.
Then maybe when it's time to go out, somebody could open the gate so they could go out that way or something.
Yeah, um.
I don't know.
There wouldn't be room to drive all the way through from the, from our side. Cuz the, where the varsity field's gonna be, that's gonna be right tight.
Okay, I just didn't know, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, throw it out there.
Yep.
Um, see what you can put. I know that there's a, uh, wouldn't be too much to level that out a little bit out there, would it?
No, there's a berm. They put a berm, um, in between the ball field and the stump dump. It's a pretty big berm. So if you just leveled that up to that berm.
Yep.
They'd have to walk up over it and, but.
And we're gonna put the fence back across there here in some point.
We could put a gate or something, an opening in that berm so.
Yep.
The, the biggest problem would be there's two, there's two gates getting out there, um, that they'd have to go through to get back out or in if they went through that are locked.
So if they did something, you'd have to put somebody in charge of that, whoever's charged it.
Just open it. We, just like we would the field, open it up.
Yeah, you'd just have to coordinate it with Jackie cuz.
Yep.
We locked it up because people were going in and putting trash in Evans' trash place that where that. They were just driving in and throwing stuff.
Right, yep.
And then we had to put the gate up into the stump dump because people were going in there and.
Dumping stuff.
Dumping painted wood and.
So anyway, there's issues that need to be dealt with, but.
Yeah.
It's something to look into anyway.
Yeah, just let us know what you would need from us or, or, you know. I think our, I, our board would be totally open to that if, if, if we could do that. And I think, um, um, I wanna say Rob was talking with Jack Carrier. This was a little while back, and I think he mentioned he'd be willing to bring his dozer down and flatten whatever needed to be flattened. So.
Yeah, we'd have to do a little bit of work. Where you drop down into the stump dump wouldn't be real great for cars. It's a little left right there. We'd have to do something there, put in a couple loads of material and.
Isn't there quite a space though where we're, we were dumping that stuff from South Hill or wherever it was a few years ago?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a spot from the pile of debris that we had to that, um, soil that they put in that berm. And it drops off a little bit, and we've been, we've been gradually filling that in with fill, and we ain't got no place to take anywhere else. We've been bringing it down there and dumping it in there and leveling it off with the bucket loader. It wouldn't take a lot to smooth out the spot out there.
It's pretty wide, probably a couple hundred feet wide, I'd say.
Yeah, it's, yeah, probably.
Stated, stated.
Eighty feet.
Stated parking lot width for cars, you know, parking tail and tail around that would drive through the middle of sixty feet, so. I think, I think like it's a big area. That would be a couple hundred feet long with a house, uh, twenty, ten foot cars, forty cars out there.
Yeah.
So, I, I, that should help a lot.
That would be huge help.
Anyway, so look into it.
Okay.
Go up, put a plan and.
Yep.
Come back if something you guys are thinking about doing.
Sure.
You know, it'd be, it would be good if we could come in from that way.
Yep.
Because your stuff is on Saturdays and the dump is open, so couldn't have traffic.
Oh, right, right, right.
Going in there and coming, coming into the dump entrance and going to the stump dump.
Yeah, they see the problem is with that berm that they put in there, they couldn't drive all the way into the stump dump. That on the right side.
The far end.
Is it, where the berm is, is it, is it like, is it a, is it a berm or is it a ditch?
It's, we took all that material and, and basically pushed it up and then some to the end, but it's, there's no ditch on our side. Um, but it's, again, fitting the varsity sized field in there, there's not gonna be any room. You, the cars would be driving across the field to get to that side. On, on the smaller fields, there, we could make enough room for a car to fit down through, but once we get to the, the big field, they'd be driving across the end of the field.
Well.
Probably just try to get together and go down, take a look at this. I'm trying to picture where you're gonna.
Yeah.
You guys work up some kind of a plan or a couple different options and.
Yep.
We could do a site visit or whatever, if it's something you wanna do or if you do.
Yep, thanks Ben.
Uh, anybody else have anything? Okay, approval warrants, uh, SB two-two-one-six-four, got a motion on that?
Need the motion to approve visit.
Second.
Motion made seconded any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Payroll warrants for nine twenty-one twenty-five. Motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
You're on it.
I'm on it.
I'm on it myself.
Yep.
Who seconded it?
Kyler and Scott?
Yeah.
Ken?
I've looked at you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, approved a slight word meeting minutes of nine-eight. Got a motion on that?
As written.
Second?
Second.
Motion made seconded a discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, on the new business, uh, the drainage project, Pleasant Street, Flint Road and Hebert Road. Discovered that, uh, the measurements that were given out for everybody to bid on were three times what the actual, what was staked out, three times longer than the actual measurements given on every single project. Flint would have, it was one, one project on Pleasant Street, one project on Hebert Road and Flint Road, a combination of three separate spots, where every, every single measurement was one third of what it was actually staked out to do. So, and I found that out, we were partway through Pleasant Street. I first figured it out on that road, um, and, uh, Dr. Jackie wouldn't tell them what the deal was. And that, that still was within the total, the fourteen hundred forty foot total originally was. And we were hit, we hit a lot of, even as dry as it, we're hitting really moist dirt up through in front of Steve Shagra's place and Son Brad's and up. And we're, we were hitting, today we're around the eight hundred foot mark today, and we're still hitting, hitting a lot of rocks and around them rocks, it's wet. So, it was the right choice to keep going on that road, not stop, try to jump around, I think, so. I think it, it'll be in good shape because it's gonna take care of that water issue. The way we're doing it is we're digging down five feet, um, putting four inch perforated pipe in and then a foot of stone around the pipe and, uh, filter fabric over that. Then we're filling up to within eighteen inches of the road level with a crushed tail end from the tail end pit. So it's got good drainage into it and then a plant mixed material on top of that for the road surface. Um, I think it's, it's gonna work really well, same, similar thing we did on the upper section of Hebert Road years and years ago, and that road has never had issues since that time. It's gotta be fifteen years now. So, but the problem is, we figured on X amount of dollars and it's gonna be three times that much if we do everything. So we had a ledge item in there of five thousand dollars per site. It was ten cubic yards per site. And, uh, we, uh, our fifty cubic yards. And whatever, we, we haven't hit any yet. We've had a couple of big rocks that on the normal job will be considered ledge. There's ten cubic yards.
There's fifty total for all, for all, all the sites together.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was fine, it was fine. So, so far, we've got eight hundred feet and we haven't hit anything that we couldn't move, so. I don't know. I mean, I have no idea knowing what's gonna hit in other spots, but if they hit some, I don't know. It was a couple of big rocks. I'd just barely get out. Or over a yard, it would be classified as large, as long as I can move and get them into the water, I mean, uh. Try to do anything for that, but, um. So. Jackie worked, uh, Jackie, uh, Jack, Jackie and I actually went out Friday and physically wheeled every site. I had two, two wheels, one in each hand, and she followed me with the truck in every sites just about three times exactly what was in the bed sheets.
That's your, the breakdown in front of you.
So there's three sections on Flint Road then?
Three sections on Flint Road, um, and then the price per foot is forty-two thirty-nine, so the total cost per foot on, in each column, um, comes to a total of a hundred and eighty-six thousand seven twenty-seven seventy. And then the fifteen thousand dollars that was budgeted for ledge was broken down, five thousand for Pleasant and Hebert cuz they're over twelve hundred feet, and then the other ones were broken down based on the, the, the length.
Now, this was the original pricing or this is the new?
No, that's the new pricing.
Okay.
The original pricing. The total for all of them together was seventy-four thousand seven seventy-six, based on the old footage. See, that, that's, that's the new, and that was what was bid, and that was the approved amount. Um, going, reviewing my road rehab budget, I have about a hundred and uh, ten thousand dollars in the road rehab. So, finishing Pleasant Street, um, if everything's good, it's fifty-two thousand. How's that? I can't.
So if we don't run into ledge?
We don't run into ledge, it's gonna be fifty-two-five-sixty-three-sixty. Based on the twelve hundred and forty feet. Um, so then we have roughly fifty-five thousand left. So, we have enough to do Hebert Road, and then we would have to put off the three sections on Flint Road um, until next year.
I, it's not cuz it's Hebert Road, cuz I rarely travel that side of it, but, um, I don't know how many years ago it was, probably four years ago, so I don't know. It was before I got back on the board, but that, that road has resurfaced all the way to town line with, with crushed ledge, uh, crushed granite. And last spring I noticed it heaving pretty good. It didn't do it a couple of years prior to that, but we had a lot less cold winters. But if we keep, if, if we don't address that water issue on that road, we're gonna, that mud's gonna come up through that stuff. We just did a quarter mile of road. It had to be forty thousand dollars or so to put into it, just guessing off the top of my head. You're gonna lose that surface gravel. It's gonna turn into half mud and half gravel, so. I would strongly recommend that we do the Hebert Road one versus this, the Flint Road one. We haven't really done any overlay road reconstruction on Flint Road that I'm aware of, other than spots here and there, maybe.
Yeah, nothing, just where it flooded and we had to repair the roads. We haven't really put any material up there.
No, they did some work in years past above Ron House place.
Before me, they did do a section from Ron House up to Tomlinson's Sugar House, but. And they did put drainage up through there. There is drainage up through there.
So I don't know. I mean, that's, that would be my recommendation, just that they'd see lose that surface gravel that's new, fairly new.
There's two spots on Flint Road that typically get bad every year. This last year, there was a different spot, but typically just above Jimmy's driveway before you get to Ron House, there's a culvert that crosses the road right there. And for some reason, the water comes down to that culvert, and then it just, the upper side of it lifts into a big burden lane. And then the other spot is at Chris Covey's, right after the S corners, and there's a spring in the road. And the town is gonna put drainage in there. It's all set. We're gonna start that next week. Um, there's two hundred feet of drainage there that we're gonna do anyways. The other spots were kind of a, they're kind of freaky. It depends on the year. Um, the one from Riddle Road down to the resets to the corner. That one hasn't been a problem in the past. This last year, there was some humps up there. They didn't break open. We didn't lose it to mud. And then, uh, down past Doug Pore's ha, old house, where it pitches up over and goes down towards Pat Riley's, or past Pat Riley's down that way. That one this last year humped up, but it didn't break open into a mud hole.
That section of road is, was, uh, a whole lot better this year than it has been in the past, so. The dense grating material that got put on there last year, it smothered up, did a little bit of work.
Yeah.
Are those sections above or below that spring?
There's one above it. There's actually two, two sections of this. Um, two and three are above that spring, and then one is right at the beginning of Flint Road.
Yeah, actually on Pleasant Street, one of my guys handed Jackie some of the dirt with a ton of fire.
Yeah, he handed me a handful of, almost mud on Pleasant Street. I couldn't believe it, how wet it was, that he pulled out of the, out of the hole and handed to me.
Is that about four feet down?
Just about at the five foot level.
About five foot.
Four and a half, five feet. There's about three foot of gravel in that road.
Yep, well, we put gravel after gravel after gravel after gravel.
That road was at least three, two and a half feet lower at one point.
It's amazing. You can see about, it goes down about eighteen inches dry as a bone, and then it starts to get darker as it goes, goes down. You'll believe how wet it was down in there.
We did a section on Snow Bridge right at the begin, right at the end of the blacktop on the apron of Snow Bridge up the hill this year. Same thing, we did this drainage. And it was for a hundred feet, it was beautiful material. No idea why the water was pushing the hump up there. But up a hundred feet, five feet deep, we were in that much clay. So it was pretty obvious that the water was sitting right there.
Following that good material down to.
Following it down to where the blacktop was all compacted and everything and then going hmm. But I am in agreement. I, um, I'm the one that did these bids. I'm the one that messed this up. Um, when I measured them, I measured them in feet, and then I divided it by three thinking square yards or yards, and that's what I wrote down, but I wrote it down as linear feet, so they're off, they're all off by three.
Okay, I'll make a suggestion.
Yeah.
That we continue the work on Pleasant Street, finish that up, and attack the situation on Hebert Road, leave Flint Road for this year, finish, go, go back to it in the spring of next year. Dave, you guys are gonna go up and do some work on Flint Road, get it done. And that's, I mean, it just makes the, makes sense.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to wait. We'll have to get through until July one and get into the new fiscal year.
Right, right. Uh, there's one other question though. You won't, uh, stay with that price and then just go on two thirds more?
Yeah, it's, it's funny.
Okay.
I just didn't wanna keep going and come back with a bill three times.
Right, no.
Well, was that a motion or a suggestion?
That was a suggestion, but that can be turned into a motion. I just wanted to kind of pitch it out there. It makes sense. And yes, obviously, the added, the correction and.
Maybe just, just carry through whatever by numbers.
It is what it is.
Well, that sounded like a motion to me, and I'll say.
All right.
That's our.
Motion to make.
I'll, I'll make that a motion.
Say it again, though.
Just, just.
Right, 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 say that again.
I don't wanna muddy the waters, but I just wanna recuse myself for voting on this just because we're doing the work, so.
Right.
No, 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 I get it, I get it. Okay.
Forget your motion. You're the, you're running the thing to get through this.
I, I, I'm gonna make the motion to.
Well, you can't make a motion.
I can't cuz I'm in charge. Okay. That's right.
I make the motion.
Okay.
That we table Flint Road till next year. And we continue on Pleasant Street and Hebert Road. And with contractor agreeing to stick with this footage price and just go up the two thirds. That was all that.
It'll be whatever, whatever footage comes out, dude.
Right.
Second?
No, I said.
Do we have a second?
Yes. Uh, I'll second. And then discussion.
Okay, we've got a motion has been seconded. Any other further discussion on this?
So I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, there was an error with the mathematics, and this was something that came in through bid. And we chose Hebert Construction due to the lowest bid. But now, it's going to exceed that bid amount, correct? Because of the mathematical error, but doesn't that create a potential issue?
It's, it's still the price per foot.
Yeah.
It's still the, the same as it was. It's less than the other two bidders per, per foot. It's just more footage.
Did they bid per foot or, I thought they bid per job?
No, per foot. It's all done per foot.
Everything was done per foot.
And then the material was done. Uh, figured in it too.
Okay.
It's a safe bet that the longer distance, the other guys still would be more expensive cuz they usually all do it. It's this much per foot of digging, trenching, whatever.
What was the other bid per foot, Jackie, if I don't mind asking?
Hold the phone. I'm getting there.
I don't have the mathematics in front of me, so.
I have to go get my calculator.
Rodney has a question.
So, who is the contractor for that project?
One person bid them all, got them all.
Hebert Construction won the contracts for all three roads.
Yeah.
Oh, they, they.
He had the lowest bid on all the roads.
Yeah, that project was all three roads. Yeah, we tried to keep it so that they would do them all, you know, instead of one here and one there and.
So Avery was fifty-seven point three-five versus forty-two thirty-nine. And.
Ward was the other one?
No.
No, Bobby.
Bobby, Paul and Arrow.
Yeah, I remember.
And Bobby was a hundred and seventeen.
And just another question, because the other thing that's on our business is paving quotes, so is this change this year before July twenty-twenty-six, would that be affecting the money we have?
No.
Okay.
So, finishing Pleasant Street, which you're doing right now?
Yes, yes.
You're working on Pleasant Street right now?
Pleasant Street.
Yeah, okay, so finishing that, and you wanna fin it, and, and do Hebert? So that brings us over the seventy-four and then taking whatever the difference will be out of road rehab or what?
No, it's all coming out of road rehab.
Okay.
The whole, this whole thing is coming out of road rehab.
Okay, so the seventy-four was already gonna come out of it?
Correct.
You were just adding that?
Yeah.
So, and then you guys. We're kinda just hoping that the ledge amount.
Won't be there.
Won't be there.
And where, where are we going to do pave, Cogswell Street paving? Where was that money coming from? That wasn't road rehab?
That's paving.
Paving.
Paving reserve.
Okay. I didn't know if they were the same.
No, no, there's two separate reserves for road rehab and paving.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is it?
Good, yeah, good, thank you.
Okay, uh, just call for a vote. All approve the motion to, uh, do, finish Pleasant Street and Hebert Road for the agreed amount. Was, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose.
I recuse. You're recusing some.
Thank you, Clay. Okay. Um, now we're going on the paving, discussed on Cogswell Street. Initially, Dave came in last meeting with a price and plan to grind and pave Cogswell Street. And we said we'd rather have it shimmed and paved, so we'd keep maximum out of pavement on it as we could. And he went back, got some prices for that. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, he talked to me about, we were gonna initial prices to shim and pave it one inch, and I said, I didn't think that was quite strong enough.
And I was mistaken. He figured it at an inch and a half at that price. When I gave you that price, it was figured at an inch and a half.
Okay. So I, that's good. But anyway, um, after this debacle on, uh, the drainage issue, I told Jackie, I said, well, we're gonna go and measure that Cogswell Street too, so we went up there and measured it all, and it's twenty-four hundred, it's eight hundred usually had for price. That's where you're receiving the forty thousand. We just stopped at the corner, but we walked the whole thing, and then where the trailer would put the wireline in, oh, many years ago. Over the years, the road has settled. There's like a dip, it's probably that deep. On, uh, it would be on the right-hand side going towards the quarries for quite a distance, and then there's another couple of spots that's cracked up and it goes, so. We talked about it. It just wasn't any sense stopping at the corner. We would just pave that whole street, have that whole street done with. We talked about it, it just wasn't any sense stopping at the corner, we would just pave that whole street, have that whole street done with. And so I had Jackie uh, contact Roger to agree again and have him come up and re-figure it. And uh, we reeled it out, it was exactly a hundred feet more. From the corner to the intersection of Robert Road, so. Um, but then he, when he went up, he went, I don't know what the reason was, you said, told me this one, but.
He, there, there's a, there's a, a section at the intersection of Granite, right at the intersection of where Graniteville and Cogswell Street meet and there's a rough spot there. So it's actually a hundred and twenty feet that.
It's where the two, the two seams come together, where they did that patch, it's sunk a little there, so he just wanted to go twenty feet further on the, into the intersection.
So he gave her the price based on that extra footage and. But the, the footage was correct and I, it is, I had the two wheels again going down the road, so.
So it's the total, the original one was seventy six thousand that I'd sent to you all and then the additional was forty one two, which brings it to a hundred and seventeen two.
And what was Pike's original quote? For.
The milling, that was a hundred and eight five.
And that's for a legit pave?
That was milling and then paving.
Two inches mill, two inches paving. Be the same depth that's there, it just was grinding two inches.
Yeah.
And then paving that back, two inches, that's not, that was not to shim anything, it was messed up, you know.
Yeah.
Um.
Does milling get rid of the stuff that's messed up? I'm not a paver.
Not necessarily.
Some of it, but not all of it.
You're milling two inches and you got a four inch groove in the road, you're only taking off two inches.
So this would shim the bad low areas and then put a one and a half inch overlay.
This is gonna actually make a better road in the long run, it'll be a ten year road instead of a five to seven year road.
And it's longer.
And it's, yeah, it's doing it all, not this.
Where you got those dips, apparently the soil's weaker there, that's why you get the dips, or like the water line or something that's put in, that's settled over the years. So by shimming it, you're gonna add that much more strength to it. And then when you grind the rest of it, you're just taking off two inches of strength that you already have. To try to, you know, smooth things out, this, before they got these grinding machines, that's the way they always used to go, they'd shim the most spots, get it up to this, it's not, and then they paved the whole thing over.
That's what they did on the Graniteville Road from the beginning of Meadow Street to Adams Road, was they shimmed it and then paved an inch and a half of the blacktop up through there.
And the hundred and eight five was only for sixteen hundred feet.
And then just again.
This is adding the eight hundred and twenty feet to that.
And then.
So it's coming in nine thousand more.
Yeah, and then for the residents, because essentially we're just adding pavement on the road potentially. Will they make sure that the people can get in and out of their driveways if we're raising the actual road, make sure.
You'll have to.
That's part of paving, you're gonna.
Eddie, I just wanna make sure, cause. Any, any blacktop driveway, they'll apron it.
They'll mill it and apron it and you'll be.
And then they'll grind it, apron it, and any dirt driveway, we always go in after with shoulder material and build it up, so it's. Same thing, I mean, we did the same thing up on Falls Bay Road with all oak drive.
With all that said and done, are you guys gonna still be able to get those manholes, the, the risers up there and get them done?
We can do it, providing we get an answer right away.
Oh.
We're gonna get it tonight.
You definitely, Mike Avery's already lined up to do the cover.
Mike Avery's gonna change the cover next week, either this week or next week. And that'll give it a month, close to a month before Roger can get there and to settle. And Mike's gonna do the cover and then shh, blacktop it up to where it is now. And that way there it'll be, there'll be a little bit of blacktop there to go over with the shim and.
He's not gonna be doing this in the snow, right?
I hope not.
I don't know.
It, it wouldn't be the first time we paved, not by Lila's way in the snow.
I know.
It's not the best idea.
It ain't good.
No.
It ain't good.
Roger says he can get it in the first part of this next month, so.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's why.
First part of October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cause you, yeah, cause he said a month.
Yeah.
Well, three weeks.
Okay, middle of October, way better than the end of October.
You got two weeks left this month.
I mean, the plant shut down usually around deer season around here, so.
Yeah, second week to November usually.
November fifteenth.
Yep.
Usually weather ain't too bad till then, but after that, it's pretty iffy, I know they were doing that up there on Jesse Road, that was snow flying and cold and. It weren't the best job they ever did, for sure.
Um, the, there's three manholes up there that have to be repaired. And there's two manholes that'll have to have a inch and a half paving, is it on them? But we're gonna pull the cap covers on all of them to make sure that, there's five of them in the road. And we're gonna pull the covers on all of them and check to make sure the bricks are all solid in there, cause if they aren't, we gotta fix them before they pave it.
Is there a solid surface riser underneath those bricks? Can you pull them and just put a concrete one in there?
I don't know, it was done when the soil line was put in.
It'd be better off to do them the right way first.
If, if we have to build them up, we'll use cement bricks instead of regular bricks.
Those cement bricks deteriorate.
Yeah.
You can buy the concrete pavers.
Concrete caster.
Yeah, but you can buy those grade rings, concrete grade rings.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Different, four inches, two inches, eight inches.
Cause right, cause right now, they're actually pretty good as far as level with the blacktop, there's just a couple of them that are kitty corners that we gotta straighten them up. And then they'll have to come up a inch and a half.
Most of the old hard, hard dory bricks, you know, old type. The newer ones ain't worth a shit and then cement ones certainly aren't worth a shit, the salt gets out and they just deteriorate.
Mm-hmm.
But they make the concrete grade rings, go, you gotta build it up that much at all.
You get them from camp or?
Do a lot better.
Camp or weed or any one of those, they make them all in cast.
Yeah.
That's, that's solid cement, that's, that's.
Wait, you know, no brick can just, pff, set it down there and you're done.
Then you mortar, you mortar them, mortar them in or you can use a manhole sealer. Put, put two strips of manhole sealer around, put it on it and see what you cover then.
We don't typically deal with them, but a couple of my guys that are hired to work for us have done them in the past at their towns, where they know what they're doing, so we'll get them done.
It'll be a lot faster than bricking them, using those grade rings, it'll be a better job. So I guess we kinda had the discussion for the motions, but I wanna make a motion to.
I was gonna say, just one more quick question, so in theory, because again, my house was built in eighteen sixty three, I tried to do a project at my house. I take off a piece of the drywall and the thirty minute job is gonna take me three weeks. So you're in construction, you're in construction. We pull up the sewer coverings and it's not what you expect or anticipate, are we still anticipating? That it'll get done pre, mid-November at the worst case scenario? Cause that's what it sounds like the company, that, you know, like I said, I've just worked on my house and like I said, pull something out. And I say, well, the person that did this in the last one hundred fifty years did a completely opposite of what I would have ever done. So that's all I really wanna know is that.
We did a couple guys working on it, should be able to average one a day.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we've got one, the drainage project on Flint Road is gonna take us three days, we figured two to three days to finish that. And then the guys will move right up to that, the ones that aren't making sand or hauling sand there.
And then just the extra funds, is that just coming out of the paving?
Yeah, it's out of the paving.
And what is the full paving, so not, that we have this much in the paving, that's correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have, we have the money to cover this.
Okay.
My, you know, my thoughts are this is gonna be the best, best fix for the, that road, we shouldn't have to deal with it again for like, like.
Ten years.
Ten years.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you can do it all. If we can cover it, I'd say just, I just.
That street will be completely done right to the town line and it's over with.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh, accept the extra footage and cost there.
Hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred.
For a hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred dollars.
Do you second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose? Around the table, anybody have anything? Spot?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm good.
Tyler? Do you get tired? Jackie, listen, we never get no management report, you'd have nothing to tell us?
Yeah. I don't do it during special ones.
Okay, okay, we gotta go to executive session, so I need a motion to take a brief recess.
I make the motion when you adjourn.
Okay, we're gonna go to executive session.
Oh, you have to adjourn and then go to the recess.
No, we get adjourned to meet until after the executive session, we didn't take the motion, we take a recess.
Five minute recess.
Five minute recess, everybody's here, so.
I second a five minute recess.
Yeah.
We give Dave time enough, gather up the stuff.
Thank you.
And they have that Dale Gerdig school math too, you know.
What do you expect?
Thanks, Dave.
You think he's not the treasurer?
Do we need to make, there was a motion made, we need to vote.
We had a second.
Yeah.
Do, do you wanna finish, like, we had a.
Someone, what's that?
We never voted.
We never voted.
Recess five minutes.
All, all favor?
Aye. Okay, so now I can block this thing out.
I'm gonna lock.
And shut the audio. And shut the audio.
Hey, we just come out of executive session. We have a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion for me and Mary to meet with the library trustees to discuss intergovernmental, intergovernmental working relations at their October meeting.
You're second?
I'm making second.
Most of main second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Close? Now I'd like to state a motion adjourned.
Make motion adjourned.
Seconding that motion.
Most main second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for coming, Dusty and Jeff.